Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:05 PM of November 19th, 2019. We'd like to call the City of Cortland County Council Meeting to Order. All will rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, public comments. We ask that comments are addressed to council as a whole to deal with issues relevant to the city. And we ask that people keep their comments to three minutes or less. Our first speaker, Carol Benowitz. Carol, good evening.
Hi. How's everybody here tonight?
Good, how are you?
Watch that cord.
Hi, my name is Carol Benowitz. And I just wanted to come tonight to just say a few words about the election that I was just able to be part of, where my husband was in a historic election. It was a total write-in campaign for Cortland County Treasury. And from the people I've talked to, I understand that's never actually happened before, where no one was on the ballot. And I just wanted to say how gratified my husband and I are from the support received from both sides of the aisle. And it was a true pleasure to work on something. I enjoyed every single second. My husband is ready to hit the ground running. And we know that it's a big job and there's a lot of things that have to be addressed. But I have never been more proud of my husband. The last two weeks, he was out every day, all day, knocking on doors, talking to people. We showed them how you do a write-in ballot and what they had to write on, because his name is not exactly simple. And then I had campaign materials every day. I had it with me every day I talked to someone. So I just want to thank everyone who supported him. And it was really great, because it was truly a grassroots bipartisan campaign. And I thank you all for your help and your support.
John, congratulations. Thank you for serving. Good luck. Our second speaker, Tim Bennett? Is that how you say this?
I'm a little bit taller, so I'll hold it up here so you can hear me. Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Bennett. I'm from Rome, New York. An old seven grad from Cortland. I care about the community. I've been living back there. Moved away, came back, been here since '09. One event that all of Cortland County loves is First Light, which is essentially New Year's Eve. On New Year's Eve, everyone mingles downtown. And then at the clock tower, they have Oh My John's Galleon. They have the ball drop and whatnot. Historically, that was ran by the Cortland Downtown Partnership. And due to, you know, not having staff and things like that, some of the events, they've liquidated. And I'll probably say that after helping them for multiple years, I'll be taking over that event. We're going to do it just the same. And there'll be more announcements and things like that. But I'm blessed with the opportunity. And I started submitting the paperwork and whatnot here. Everyone can't hear me, right? Okay, I'm just making sure I know I'm up here. But I'm very blessed with the opportunity. And I'm excited for it and see what 2020 brings. I mean, I see a lot of good things coming into our community. We need to keep working together. And everyone, God bless.
All right, here we go.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks for taking that over. Don't let us down.
I won't.
First light's been an annual tradition for years. I'm sure it's going to be another fantastic event. I have a request. Katie Silman, you had a request for an announcement?
I do. Last council meeting, I said that I was working on a board meeting. And I have that scheduled for the 16th of December. That's a Monday night. It will be at the Cortland Elks. Their parking lot is shared with the Hollywood Restaurant. Cortland Elks is right off of Broughton Ave. And we have Bob Rhea coming to talk about zoning. We have Brian Fitz coming to talk about reassessment. And I'm hoping that we will have someone from the codes department as well. So I'm calling for a Board Two meeting, but anybody's welcome to come from any of the other boards if you're interested in those topics, assessment, zoning, new codes. And I'll see you there. Oh, sorry. We'll start at six, hoping to keep it to an hour, hour and a half. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor's report, we would like to recognize. He's not present this evening, but still would like to recognize Lieutenant Michael Strangeway for 25 years of public service to the City of Cortland and our police department. So I'll ask Chief Catalino, can you come forward and take these and pass them along, along with our thanks? And Chief, before you get back too far, we've got a couple of visitors who aren't usually outfitted in uniform in the audience as we are today. But Chief is going to introduce our two newest boys in blue here in the city.
So I've been to a couple of the fire department swear-ins for their new firefighters. And as impressive as it is, we can't quite do that with our officers. And I'll just explain briefly. Our officers have to be sworn in before they can be eligible to even attend the police academy. And once they begin the grueling six-month process of the police academy, there's no guarantee they're going to make it through. So I can't swear them in publicly and acknowledge them until I know they're going to make it through the academy. Well, these two officers, Officer James Badger and Michael Maniachi, just finished their six months academy and they're in field training now. So they're our newest officers. With all new officers, I give them a folder that contains the law enforcement code of ethics and a certificate that I award to them upon their appointment. So I'll read briefly what the certificate says. "Cortland Police Department, City of Cortland, New York. Reposing special trust and confidence in Michael A. Maniachi. I do appoint him as police officer in the Cortland Police Department on the fourth day of March 2019. And he shall observe and follow such orders and directions as he shall receive from the Chief of Police or other superior officers set over him according to the laws of the State of New York and the rules and regulations of the Cortland Police Department." That's signed and sealed by me on the fourth day of March. And the other one. "Reposing special trust and confidence in James U. Badger. I do appoint him as police officer in the Cortland Police Department on the 18th day of March 2019. And he shall observe and follow such orders and directions as he shall receive from the Chief of Police or other superior officers set over him according to the laws of the State of New York and the rules and regulations of the Cortland Police Department, signed and sealed by me on the 18th day of March." So both of these officers started the academy shortly after their appointment. We started with three, we ended up with two. And these are the two. Michael Maniachi, raise your hand, you can look at the council. And James Badger. Welcome to the Police Department. They're still in field training. They'll remain there probably until the beginning of January. So it'll be almost a year turnaround before we can get them loose on the streets to help us out. But Maniachi is a lifelong resident of Portland, at least. And James is not too far from here. He came from Fayetteville. But they're our newest officers, so if you would welcome them.
Get out on the road, we don't need you here tonight. All right, we have one proclamation for this evening. It is about Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Cortland, New York celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.7 million small businesses in the U.S. And they represent over 99% of businesses with employees and are responsible for 64% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas 96% of consumers who plan on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants they've not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And since we support our local businesses, they create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed and do endorse the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Brian Tobin, Mayor for the City of Cortland, hereby proclaim November 30th, that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, as Small Business Saturday. I urge residents of our community, all communities across the country, support your small businesses and your local merchants on that Saturday and hopefully throughout the year. And as added enticements on Small Business Saturday in the evening, please come out and join us. We're going to kick off the holiday season. We will have Santa Claus at the annual tree lighting ceremony, right here outside of City Hall. Festivities begin, and this is Saturday, the 30th, at 6:00 PM. And in particular, if the weather is a little cool, we are pretty quick about getting through. It's a free event that is open to everybody throughout our community. And we will light the tree. There will also be music. We have, I believe the name is Dynamic Claws, an acapella group from a high school. Santa Claus will visit and refreshments courtesy of some friendly donors. And our fire department will house people so that they have a chance to meet Santa in a warmer environment. Santa will be there greeting everyone and their families and have a chance to have their picture taken with Santa Claus. So Small Business Saturday, the first Saturday after Thanksgiving, that's November 30th. Come on out, get a little shopping done, and then come downtown, sing a little bit, and have some old-fashioned fun with your neighbors. Next up, minutes from our last meeting. Motion to consider filing minutes. John Bennett, second. Carrie Thomas, discussion, any issues or concerns regarding minutes from our last meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes, as is, we say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Our first official agenda item, presentation on how to address or addressing the plastic pollution crisis. And we have representatives here from Nyberg, which is the New York Public Interest Research Group. Give you guys the opportunity to introduce yourselves. And what else do we need to do for you to help these Cortlandans set up? Very good. Microphone, and then that way it projects so everybody, not only here, can hear you, but also a little bit easier to record for poster.
Great. Thank you all. So my name is Ethan Gormley. I'm the project coordinator for Nyberg, the New York Public Interest Research Group here at SUNY Cortland.
I'm Evelyn Marks, I'm one of the students and project leaders with Nyberg on campus.
And we have a few other student volunteers with us today. Thank you all for coming out, Melissa, Kayla, and Carrie Ann. We're just coming back from a presentation at the Toppies County Legislature, so we're very happy to be able to swing here as well. Yeah. So we'll just kick this right off then. And I'm going to set a timer. And go ahead.
So since 1976, Nyberg has been a leading voice in New York on a wide range of environmental and energy issues. And Nyberg's Environmental Protection Project is fighting back against serious threats posed by water pollution, air pollution, climate change, and toxic chemical exposure, while holding corporate abusers accountable.
The public is already really familiar now with the horrifying images of plastic pollution across the world. We're seeing, you know, viral videos of sea turtles and plastic straws in their nasal cavities. Seabirds and whales decay with their bodies filled with plastic waste. And children in other countries wading through plastic-laden waters. But what does this pollution crisis really mean? And how does it impact our environment, wildlife, and ultimately us?
So there's approximately nine million metric tons of plastic waste that enters our oceans every year. And it is estimated that there is a total of 150 million tons of plastic in the oceans already. And by 2025, which is just a mere five years from now, for every three pounds of fish, there would be one pound of plastic. That's a lot of plastic. And, but what does all of this plastic in our oceans and waterways mean for our ecosystems and ultimately us?
A 2015 study found that 90% of seabirds are consuming plastic, mistaking it for food. Scientists have been tracking plastic ingestion by seabirds for decades. In 1960, plastic was found in the stomach of fewer than 5%, but by 1980, it had jumped to 80%. Yeah, yeah, that's huge.
So scientists have found microplastics, which are the tiny microscopic pieces of plastic which shed after large, plastic has been broken down in about 114 aquatic species. And more than half of those end up on our dinner plates. So sunlight, wind, waves, and heat break down plastics into smaller bits. And things will look like plankton, fish, and even whales. And to them, this is what they think is food. So plastic blocks digestive tracts, and this diminishes the urge to eat and alter feeding behavior, all of which reduce growth and reproductive output. Their stomachs are definitely stuffed with plastic, and some species end up starving and dying from this.
While I think we're all horrified with these images that we see, it might not seem like the most relatable thing to you. But unfortunately, these microplastics are also being found in our bodies, too. So studies found that tiny plastic particles and fibers have been found in the stool of eight people who provided samples as part of a pilot study. And food packaging, things like plastic bottles, those shed small fibers. While it's not yet known exactly how this will impact human health, I think we can all agree we don't want to be eating or drinking plastic. So for example, plastics exposes to toxic, often carcinogenic chemicals. Just one example is polystyrene. Polystyrene is made using styrene, a known animal carcinogen, and possible human carcinogen, and neurotoxin. Other chemicals that leach from plastic include PCBs, which you've probably heard of in the news, and heavy metals. Some of these chemicals are considered endocrine disruptors. And low levels considered safe for human health have been found to harm lab animals.
Plastics are being found absolutely everywhere right now. And recently, microplastics were found in ice core samples from the Arctic area.
New York is a coastal state, so we have a lot of reason to care about the plastic that we contribute. You know, obviously, we think about the ocean a lot, but we also need to be thinking about our lakes and rivers, too. Plastic debris make up about 80% of the litter on the Great Lakes shorelines. That means a lot to me. I was in Oswego undergrad. And you know, that really is a huge tourist draw in this area. And nearly 22 million pounds of plastic enter the Great Lakes every single year. That's just a huge, huge amount. And we need to be way more careful about that because of those effects.
So microplastics are even being found near us in the Finger Lakes. And a 2019 study released by Cornell and Ifa Colleges found that microplastics, they found microplastics in Hugel Lake.
So this is a lot of bad news. You know, so many watchdog groups and environmental groups bring bad news. But thankfully, we have solutions. So for the longest time, we thought recycling was the answer. I'm sorry to say, is unfortunately not. Only a fraction of the plastic produced around the world is actually recycled, only 9%. Colored plastic, plastic contaminated food, things like that are not usually recycled. And most plastic is ending up in landfills or waterways. Additionally, because we know China stopped accepting our plastics, we've been left to deal with them on our own. This is becoming increasingly expensive to recycle, which is leading a lot of municipalities to either eliminate recycling altogether, trash their recycling, or incinerate it. Some additional examples of things that just don't work. Plastic straws aren't recyclable, they're too small. And when put in recycling bins, they're going to contaminate other items that are recyclable. So really, really hurting that whole process, polystyrene, styrofoam. Also, same story, it's just going to contaminate. So the answer is really, really simple. What we need to do is start eliminating single-use plastics. There are the big three that we see as a critical step to start with and the way that we can address the single-use plastic problem. And that is plastic bags, polystyrene, and plastic straws. So we know, we probably saw in the last budget, New York State banned single-use plastic bags. That's going into effect this March. This is important, because New Yorkers alone use 23 billion plastic bags every single year. And they're a huge, huge source of pollution. And people often think that because paper bags are going to be the new thing, that's better for the environment. It is not. More bad news, I'm sorry to say. It takes one gallon of water to produce just one paper bag, excuse me. So obviously, this is a huge, huge drain, horrible on their, on, you know, on resources. And it also is just really expensive, like solid waste is a crisis right now, and managing that. And this is just going to add to that problem. So we recommend that, you know, municipalities institute a five-cent paper bag fee, which has been proven to keep people from using paper bags, just switching over to that, and instead getting more used to bringing reusable, durable bags, as you'll see in like Wagmans and Tops and everything. We also recommend a really, really simple one to start combating. This is right here in Cortland, is an upon-request straw policy. It's really, really simple. Ulster County just did it. It's basically saying, when you go to a restaurant, instead of getting the straw popped into your drink, you have to ask for it. This is still keeping in mind accessibility, the straws are not taken away. It's just ask for it instead. If you go to a restaurant, next time you go to a restaurant, ask how many straws they throw away. They're happy to talk about it. They're amazed every day at how many straws they're constantly throwing away. Keeps them saving money, and it's just a better win-win for the environment as well. And of course, banning polystyrene is also really important. So like those styrofoam takeout retainers. Localities have led this battle before. If you remember the microbeads back in the day and waterways and things, that really got moving because of local action. And you know, Portland should consider themselves as part of this as well. Like this is absolutely something that Cortland can begin to really fight on. And that's really exciting. So there are a couple of things that we recommend doing to get this action started. Number one, start passing local laws. We have model legislation. Thankfully, other municipalities are already starting this, so it's not reinventing the wheel. You know, you can see models and take from them what's already been working. Also, we suggest writing in the paper, the Cortland Standard. You know, seeing a letter to the editor or an op-ed from their, from local, you know, elected officials sends a great message. And I think that's an awesome, awesome way to start taking action. And that is really what we advocate and suggest that, you know, our elected officials do. I can say that at the Cortland campus, we're seeing a lot of really excited people about this. We also gave a presentation at the Solid Waste Committee in the county legislature earlier this year. And they were also interested in what was going on. So I mean, the interest is there. It just comes down to us taking action. And Nyberg is here to really help you begin that if you choose to do so. And again, you know, we really, really would love to help. So I can be available after for a question and answer, whatever you guys want. And I have business cards as well for reaching out to me. Thank you so much for the time. Thank you, Pat. I really appreciate the invite. And thank you all for your work.
I have a question.
Sure.
Have you talked to the county? Have you presented to the county legislature?
Yeah, so we started at the Solid Waste Committee, just like a month or two ago. Yeah, and it was, you know, it was a really, really solid start. But then election season hit and everything got crazy. So what I think this is going to look like is everyone sort of coming together, showing support for this, and then really starting. And you know, we just came back from Toppies County. You know, our neighbors over there, they're talking about a paper bag fee tonight. So this is really a hot issue. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm feeling guilty, because I'm sitting here with a bunch of plastic bags on my desk. I'm a teacher, and I'm cutting up materials and bagging them for school. So, yeah, sorry.
This is not, this is not like anyone's one problem, right? This is us coming together, making it easier to avoid some of the pitfalls of like simple things like the straw like I mentioned, right? Super easy things that aren't all your fault, like at all.
I don't thank you. I don't take responsibility for all of this.
You got it now.
But I think it would be helpful if you sent us a fact sheet with some of the things you mentioned so that we could write a letter to the editor.
Sure.
Because as it is, that was just a lot of information.
Yeah.
And I'm aware of some of those things, but certainly not all of the...
Absolutely, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The numbers you were talking about at the beginning of your thing was how mainly all in the United States? I mean, I haven't said no, but ones in the Finger Lakes and the Great Lakes. But all the other numbers are, are not worldwide numbers, right?
Yeah, so...
I realize like California, I know gets a lot of waste of the sea, obviously coming from other countries. But is that part of that number, or you're just talking, so what you know is...
So like the 9% number of plastic that's recycled, that's from the UN, that's worldwide. So you know, the thing is, and this is something that we mentioned at the Solid Waste Committee, really happy you're bringing this up, it's a great question, is, you know, what can we do when there's other people at stake that are pumping out so much plastic and not taking care of it? And the consensus that we came to at the Solid Waste Committee was, look, we can start here, at least. You know, if nothing else, we can set that example together and really show that we care about this and we care about our community's public health. And we can put, you know, show that example, and maybe more people will catch on. You know, it's like, we were just mentioning, like, these grassroots things are really is what is making the change.
But I agree with you, the straws.
Yeah, yeah, it's so easy, you know.
You won't have to eat anymore. Everybody's got to put the salad dressing in a container, you know, choose the plastic cup. And we haven't been putting salad dressing on the salad. You didn't ask for it. The paper straws, they're really, that's, you can't even finish a drink through a paper straw.
Right.
I think it's really helpful to have this in the local context, too. Because a lot of times you see it in the media, you don't realize that this is actually showing up on the shores of Hugel Lake or in our rivers. So I think it's really helpful to have that perspective as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate you sharing some of that information.
And we do cleanups, like at Yemen Park, we did last year. And you know, we saw so much plastic pollution. And we have a breakdown that we can send over to you all tonight, that Riverkeeper, an organization, does in the Hudson River. And they break down the amount of different kinds of plastic that they get. You know, a lot of cigarette butts, a lot of things like that. But all across the board, it's all stuff you'd expect to see here as well, right? People are people, and this plastic problem is a problem throughout.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for the time. Really appreciate it.
Ethan, Evelyn, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Number two on council's agenda, resolution to accept, recognize, and appropriate the following donations to the youth program. Donation from the fall softball tournament to go to the Jim Parte Genoni Trust Fund and a donation from the William Wood family to go to the Wickwire Pool Trust Fund. Motion to consider. Try back with second, Bill Carpenter, discussion.
Many thanks.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Number three, discussion of placement of a public Sharps collection container outside of City Hall. Deputy Police Chief Paul Sandy is here to discuss.
Good evening, everyone. I gave you all a photograph of what it will look like. It's the top one, it's like two foot by two foot. We have a very similar container down at the PD for the prescription that people can come and turn back in. It'll be identical container. It's, initially I was told they're red, but I guess they're gray in their mark. This has been an ongoing discussion for several years about the EU exchange program, which I will start right out and say, none of the locals... which I will start right out and say, none of the local law enforcement is in favor of the needle exchange program. However, we can't stop it, we can stop it from coming here. So, but we all deal with the byproduct of it, and that's hypodermic needles being found throughout the city, whether it's in bathrooms or restaurants, along the street, in our parks, or wherever. We are dealing with them continuously. Several years ago, we put Sharps containers in each of our patrol cars, we have put Sharp containers in all the DPW and Parks vehicles, so if they find them, they can safely dispose them, and when they fill those up, they bring them to us. We are repeatedly getting called out for these, and our people are collecting them. A few weeks ago, the county, again, approached law enforcement about embracing the needle exchange that was unanimously voted down, we will not support that, and our concerns were, were heard. They asked if we would at least put in a Sharps container for collection, and we all agreed to that, that, you know, we have to try something to give a place for these, these needles to go, although the needle exchange program, they're supposed to go back there, but we know they're not going back there. So, by placing a Sharps container outside City Hall, it would be bolted to the ground, it'd be conspicuous. Most people, we would advertise where it is, because even citizens, you know, that are diabetics or, you know, are taking some sort of injectable medication, would have a safe place to dispose them, because we do get people that come to City Hall and say, "I have needles and I'm not supposed to put them in there, what do I do with them?", and we refer them back to, you know, the pharmacies and stuff like that. And this would give them a place to put them, there's absolutely no cost to the city. I think in the memorandum of understanding, the city is held harmless on anything, they do all the pickup, they'll do all the collection, and it's another way of us being able to look and say, we've done what we can to provide a safe and convenient location for this, so I would ask that we, we support this. One is going in front of the county office building, and one is going in front of the homework police department, so we would be the third location, and if we see that it works, you know, maybe branching out into the smaller communities, put them there.
Paul, when you're talking about putting it outside, I mean, not to remember the superior, other than inside here, but is, are there cameras outside the building all the way around?
There's one that covers the front door, and I think an ideal location would be, if you enter the front door off to the right, it's on camera, so nobody, I don't foresee anybody trying to tamper with it, or why they would want to. If you are a hypodermic needle user, you can get free ones handed out.
I'm just, you know, I'm just looking outside the back.
Right, right, and then what we would do, you know, this is by no means where we're going to track who's dropping them off, this is not for enforcement.
Yeah, I'm not even considered.
Yeah, but if, if there was a problem, we, we do have it right on camera right there outside the building.
That would be my only concern.
I think that's important to, to let people know that you're not going, there, there won't be anybody watching the camera to see who drops off, for whatever reason, and as you said, they're very, there are all kinds of reasons to be in possession of hypodermic needles.
Exactly.
So, often people who have it for multiples, have them for multiple sclerosis or diabetes, are given a Sharps container. Will the opening be large enough to put a Sharps in it, or can you only drop single needles in it?
It's a pretty wide opening, you can, you can take quite a bit into there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, unless they had like a really big Sharps container, I don't think most people have.
Right.
I think a lot of people have the smaller ones.
They're small, yeah.
Why outside as opposed to interior?
So, people feel comfortable using it, because some of these people obviously don't have a legitimate or legal purpose to be using them, and we, we don't want to stop people from utilizing this safe disposal.
Should we act on this tonight, or...
Yeah, can we make a reservation tonight?
What's your, we never really talked, is that location, Paul?
We can put it anywhere you like, but the best, I think the best location is just to the right of the main entrance door, right there, I checked our cameras tonight, it's right there on it, people can walk up, put them in there.
So, be actually facing Cork Street?
Nope, it'd be tucked off to the right.
And who maintains the box, just the building facilities?
The staff program from Southern Tier, we do that.
So, it wouldn't impact any...
We have, we have nothing, we, no, we would call them and have them check it periodically, and they will come as often as we need, so what we would do is give it a trial run for, say, two or three weeks, a month, and then have them come check it, see what the usage is, and if we need it more frequently, they'll come more frequently. As we have to do with Secura, and I think we could probably get buildings and grounds to lag it into the concrete.
Motion accepted.
Yeah. Thank you. Somebody walks every day, over the past year, I've, I have found three needles, so I end up going over to the water department, just not here, even where my camp is. The summer I went out for a walk, and it was on Route 90, there was one right down Route 90. It's become a real problem, yeah.
So, the resolution should read as follows, I believe we have a motion, but just to clarify, resolution to place a public Sharps container outside of City Hall and to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Southern Tier AIDS Program, to sign in a memorandum of understanding with the Southern Tier AIDS Program regarding maintenance and collections. Motion was by Troy, and we have a second. Phil Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Next, item, discussion consideration of a resolution to establish a GoFundMe account for the captive whitetail deer herd at the City Water Works to raise public donations to meet similar requirements of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, and he's on a roll, he's still here. Paul Sandy.
Happy to say, October 23rd, we had a very successful inspection by Ag and Markets and DEC, they come every year to check us, actually, this is the first time I've seen DEC in 10 years, but they wanted to be a part of it since we obtained our license, obtained our license. So, they came, we spent three hours, it was the most exhaustive and intensive inspection we've had in years, usually they take about half an hour. We walked the perimeter of the fences and everything, discussed, you know, every bit of care that we can give these animals, including the feed and everything, and we've already acted upon some of the things that they wanted us to do. But then DEC handed me an extensive list of requirements about the panels and the fencing and so forth, and we have been addressing the heights of the fence over the years, because they raised it to nine feet, so over the past couple of years, we've taken, we've purchased fencing from donations and piping, and the water department in their spare time has, has heightened our fence around a very large portion, and they're very happy with that. However, one regulation that none of us were aware of is, they want the bottom secured more than it is, to keep dogs out, and I said, in 10 years I've seen herds of maybe two dogs being in there, and it's short-lived. But they want us to have a little more control over the bottom of the fence, they're talking, they're happy that we did put the stone in there for the hoof control and stuff, but they want to see more of it, they would like to see the enclosure larger than what we have. And this is something I, I really would like to address, I guess so many people calling or saying that, you know, your deer are loose on 281. Those aren't the captive deer. If people realized how small the captive deer pen really is, it's, it's not nearly as expansive as it was decades ago, back when the windstorm came through and knocked out all the fences out of lock 281 back in there, you know, they, they became much smaller. We do have three, we have a main pen, and then we have two capture pens within there, and they're happy to see that, and they're happy with our darting program, and our tagging program, and our testing program, all that's going well. They would like to see a larger enclosure, which I would too, for the deer, but this all takes money, and through the bottle and can drive, which I would like to thank the community, they do a very good job, we make about six, $700 a year off bottles and cans that people donate, we get about five or 600 from the bicycle sale, that's our donations. And we have buffed fabric, we've buffed fencing out of it, we've put up signs and so forth. But to do what DEC is asking of us, and it doesn't have to be done overnight, they understand that it takes time, you know, for the fencing and stuff, we have added paint to their diet, we had to buy some round bales this year, we're, we're trying that. They want us to put covers over our feeders, we have, we purchase feeders to keep the food off the ground, so they're happy with that, but they want us to put covers over them, so the rain doesn't get on it, and there is talk about wind shelter, so if it becomes very inclement weather, that they'll place and get out of the wind, so we will be working with them on that. However, this takes money, and I would like to see if, obviously, I cannot do a GoFundMe in my name, I'm a police officer, and our state laws prohibit us from doing this, and I don't even think the municipality can do it. We would look into the legal ramifications, but I did discuss this with legal counsel, and we thought if we could find a citizen, if we could put this under, and we have a candidate in mind, and we could raise, just make people aware that we need donations for the deer, and I'm coming to you because it is a city herd, and I think there's a lot of people out there, that if they know that we need the money, they will donate, and we can take care of some of these things.
Do you think that like a nonprofit or somebody could do, like maybe Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, or...
Hey, man, but GoFundMe's are set up by individuals all the time.
I know, I just thought maybe it might help them out as well, and just a thought, I don't know.
I don't know if a non-for-profit would do it and share it all with us.
Well, I'm not saying they share it all, but it might help, it might work both ways, just a thought.
We do have some college students that have expressed interest in helping with the deer and so forth, and we did let a Syracuse University student in there, we locked him in, we let him in, locked him in, and he did a very nice video story on the deer, and, but I think there's...
There's a candidate right there.
Yeah, I think there's a huge, I think there's a huge public support for, for our wild herd, and, you know, DEC, they looked at me and they said, "Why you do this, this is a lot of work." And all of a sudden, cars started pulling in, people got out, I said, "That's why we do it."
Yeah.
"That's why we do it, we do it for the public, these deer have been here for decades." And I remember as a young boy in the 60s, being there with my father, and watching them, and every year we have the Mr. and Mrs. Claus there, and it's a great opportunity for our children, you cannot go down there on any day and not find people sitting there watching the deer, watching the ducks, and just take...
Mid 60s or early 60s?
It was the late 60s that I can remember. You're not far off of there. But I, I would, I think this is a nice way, and once again, we're taking the burden off the taxpayer. One other requirement, and I did clear it with legal, DEC, we've had an expert locally that has been very generous in helping us with using his drugs for tranquilizing and tagging the deer and so forth, and inoculating them, when they do get sick and we can take care of them. DEC and Ag and Markets agree that we should be purchasing our own stuff, and I've established a relationship with a local veterinarian to do it, and we've ordered the equipment to do it, and we will start doing that.
I have no problem, you know, talking to all the council, if they got a way to do a GoFundMe thing.
It's great idea.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that money, they, they need some regulations, so, that we're going to pay for it.
Maybe...
Sure, we're not going to shut it down, so...
Mr. and Mrs. Claus are over there, they could help promote it, since it's their deer.
We haven't found Rudolph yet, though. I'm sure he's lurking.
Chipmunks, he do.
Fly out there and show them.
Sparky's doing well.
Sparky. Talk to council about this, or...
I believe we have a resolution on the floor. Any further discussion?
Are we just, we're resolved to support it? I mean, we're not the ones initiating it.
That's Sparky's goal.
Yeah.
That's resolved.
So, do we want to wait until we actually have somebody ready to do it, or just with our blessing, go?
With our blessing, with their blessing.
Do it tonight? Okay, okay.
So, the resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief, thank you.
I will keep you updated.
Okay.
Item number five is consideration of resolution to ratify the city's procurement best practices policy in accordance with New York State and federal enactments. Resolution will require a motion to consider, John Bennett, support, and Bill Carpenter, discussion. Greg Dunson.
This is simply a bit of housekeeping to update a best value procurement policy that we've adopted, I think in 2014. There's been some additional requirements, mostly incentives and drivers for us to actually recruit minority women business enterprises, rather than just simply post the jobs in hopes they comply, so our DPW does have a program that they utilize in order to do that, so our compliance with the MWBE programs and the incentives to do it are in place, so they can, we have a particular job, we have a particular platform on a computer that that goes out, and the networking allows for the MWBE industries to come and work on our facility, or at least bid on the projects. So, this is simply bringing both the procurement policy that we have, and the best practices at request from the federal government into one document in the code book.
Are none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number six, resolution to allow the mayor to enter into a contract with the Unified Court System for court cleaning and minor repairs. Motion to consider, Phil Carpenter, second, Gary Thomas, discussion. There's a copy of the contract in the page.
This is a relatively short-term contract, it is, this is more housekeeping than anything apart from, but it only goes to through the end of the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, so we'll have something back again next spring for, you know, long term. I'm really not sure, the timing of this was kind of odd for me, but we, we still should have a contract, and this is what we presented, do we need your approval?
They're like not willing to increase their amount, like by a thousand percent?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
I guess it's always good to ask.
Yeah.
And I certainly would have kept it from you if I could have gotten a thousand percent more out of them.
Or you have to go and ask. Further discussion? Are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
We'll break the record. Number seven, discussion on recycling in the city of Corlin, last council meeting, we had some discussions about the changes that will be occurring at the county with regard to recycling and collection, and Captain Garkey, Katie Solman, and Terbeckwood have volunteered, and they've got some ideas to share with council, I believe.
Yes. Well, we've batted around the different options that we talked about with council, and to us, the one that makes the most sense is to have a glass collection once a month, and single-use recycling the other three weeks of the month. And so now we need to talk to our hauler to see if they'd be willing to do that, and we were going to ask the corporation council if we could have a copy of our contract with the hauler, just so we can see whether there's any language in there that would prohibit them or cause them to maybe balk in doing that. We would also like for the county to consider extending their hours, or perhaps staggering their hours at the county collection site. We don't think it's... We don't think it's really a good solution to try and place other recycling bins around town because then who's gonna pay for the bins and who's gonna do the job of collecting that hauling it off and certainly separating out some garbage that gets thrown in there. So we like the idea of asking the county to extend their hours so that people who miss their week for glass or just have a lot that they wanna get rid of can do so. Right now, the hours are going down, I believe, are Monday through Friday, eight to four, and Saturday till noon.
Noon.
Yeah. So that's pretty constrictive. And I spoke to Jennifer, the woman who came and talked to us at council, oh, I'm sorry, Renee. I spoke to Renee and she said she had a letter that was going out and that she would share it with the three of us. And I wrote back and asked if we make a decision, could our decision be included in the letter so that it's kind of mailed out to everybody in the county? And then there's like an asterisk for city residents, this is, you know, specific to you. And so I'm waiting to hear on that. And we are hoping that if council decides on a plan of three weeks off, one week gone, that we could then create a calendar similar to what D P W does and have that go out ideally with their mailer. So that's, that's what we've talked about and that's kind of where we're headed. How do you all feel about the three weeks on, one week off?
Good idea.
Yeah. Okay, so hopefully our hauler will be up to that.
Our hauler in the county is gonna be the biggest issue.
Yeah.
Really need to, you talked about switching off-site either trailer, you know, when you got a police at and a lot of ways everything, you know, we don't have the resources for that. Really think that the county, and obviously this is coming from the county, that they need to do some longer hours of, you know, down in the recycling place.
And I think too with the idea of switching, you know, we could have gone every other week, but for the volume of material that's being generated, as far as glass goes and what's in the waste stream, we felt that it really was more a once-a-month pickup, given how much else that you would have in your single string recycling. And so I think one of the other pieces that we'll have to make sure we do a good job with is just the education to make sure people understand which week that is and probably front-end it at the beginning of a month so that, you know, months with five weeks are gonna be addressed clearly.
But I would hope that this would all be settled by our next council meeting because time is a wastin'. And those letters should be, this whole rollout should be accomplished by the end of December, I would think.
Now, you said you haven't had a chance to either discuss with Ford Adams yet?
No, they haven't reached out to him.
Because I'm wondering if they would have-
It's all being a time tractor, isn't it?
So I'm wondering if they would have a better idea, I mean, I agree with you, I don't think the glass needs to be more than once a month. I'm wondering if they would have a better idea just how much glass they would actually save if eventually it could be once every two months. Because again, I know it's just my wife and myself, you know, it's very seldom. I have more than maybe one container of glass a week.
But, you know, in which case, then you just wouldn't put it out, like-
Yeah, I'm just saying, as far as even making it just once every two months, but again.
Right. The thing is, once you educate people and you make this whole effort to get them to adapt to one thing, you don't wanna say, "Oh, turns out..."
No, I know, it's-
It's gonna be hard enough to make them adjusted or already ask them to do it. We need to have them do nonetheless, you know, change it six months down the road.
Yeah, and we're used to getting recycling collection on a weekly basis. So if we're moving glass to once a month, you know, think about the days when, oh, shoot, I forgot it was recycling night.
Yes.
Or, oh, I'm on vacation. Well, instead of waiting, now you're waiting an extra month. If we went to twice, once every other month, then that's four months between your collections or if you miss, you know.
Yeah, I just threw that out there because I'm not sure how much glass is out there or what. I do know, I went to the recycling website and they do advertise pretty good on there, but I wanted to hold that the county would do much more.
As we said, it's just Renee, Renee doing it. So she's their PR person for the county and that's a lot to lift for one person.
Did you say that they said they were gonna do a mailer?
Yeah, she's got a mail written to everybody in the county, including the people in the city, and she was gonna give us a look at it, but she had given it to somebody else for, you know, editing purposes. But she's got one ready to go out, so.
That's where we're at. Further discussion? Thank you for taking the lead on that. Item number eight, discussion on potential zoning amendments. This is coming back around after our last meeting.
Pretty straightforward things, everybody. One set you've already addressed and that was with the new change in the code leaving out the student housing overlay district. We had to change a couple of spots where we left the language of student residence in it. So we're removing that, you've seen that local law, and that has a public hearing of the third. The other changes you got in your packet, I believe, yesterday, and they're really very minor. And our adjustments of the charts that we use in the zoning specs. For example, in one chart, there's a hotel motel section and the thought that adding the rooming boarding house there was the best location to make sure it continues to be addressed. Similarly so, adding it for the next chart, just to be consistent, and that is the rooming and boarding houses on that chart as well. And then finally-
That's the mixed-use chart?
That's two charts, there's a third. And that is relative to mixed-use buildings. And that mixed-use buildings are residents on upper floors only. That's about the only one that's really kind of a non-considered change, but something that is worthwhile considering. Finally, the, please.
There's the language.
Oh, it's the language, you have, Bob and I don't know that I disagree, was not thinking that the extension or enlargement language was appropriate and thought going back to the original language that talked about extensions and others would be better. So we just wanted to be consistent with that. That was the updated language that kind of slipped in and we're gonna use the same sort of alteration language and expanded use language in that area. Finally, for your consideration, is the issue of the hoarding of dogs. The zoning side already has a code section that limits the amount of dogs to three in a household. The only authorized enforcer of that statute is Bob, the code officer, or the zoning officer. That's simply not really an area that he's gonna be faced that often. S P C A has approached us and has indicated a willingness that in the course of their investigations, should they determine that there are more dogs than ought to be and that they're not, generally, there's also a caring for component to that, that they want to bring those kind of cases to my attention and ultimately a court action if necessary if there's not compliance. I agree with that. That is more than Bob can handle in one person. The S P C A is in the public, in the area of, you know, enforcing these sorts of issues. They're in the house for that purpose anyway and they are experts at it. They know what to do and how to then gain compliance subsequently. I've had great success working with them in terms of prosecutions and obtaining obtaining compliance on those kinds of issues. So we're not changing the law that we already have, and that is a limit to the number of dogs you can have in your home, but we're simply adding the S P C A to the enforcement side of it. So the zoning will not go away, that's gonna remain the same, we're not taking it out, but we just need help with enforcing it. So that's the final local law that you will have. So you'll have the student residence local law, you'll have the changes that are minor to the code, that will be in one local law, and then finally the local law relative to the dogs and cats.
Can I just ask, in three hundred dash one twenty-five, Bob wrote, "This interpretation is that the quote 'increasing degree of nonconformity' end quote is the same as quote 'extension or enlargement of nonconforming use' end quote." And so he wants us to use one or the other.
Right. He doesn't want to use the extension and enlargement one.
He doesn't.
No, but I think the degree, the increase in degree of nonconformity is more consistent with the rest of the code and how we've-
Okay, but then how would that read? How would three hundred dash one twenty-five read?
We would probably have something that says-
If it's extension or enlargement, it would say degree of nonconformity, the degree of nonconformity of nonconforming use shall mean?
Yeah, we'll work on making sure it works, but it'll also be something like increase is degree of nonconformity or something to that effect. The extension and enlargement part is what is not, is not consistent with our practices in the past and our explanations to people that use the code.
Okay, thank you.
And so you'll see that on the third, if everybody's okay with those, that proposal. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Let's see, number nine, D R I update. How much report, we have some back office work happening. We had a discussion about just making sure we're meeting our financial obligations with regard to timeline reversements from the state, but still making sure we're able to pay contractors. And we worked through some minor logistical hurdles over this past year, so we, with the Clinton project. So going forward, Clinton has been a pretty good opportunity for us to learn and make sure that we're doing things effectively. So when we get to D R I, we'll be very well prepared as we continue with the D R I. There was a request and I'll ask Bray Parker if he'll please share with council more information, but I'd like to add to the agenda, potential to lift the hiring freeze in the city clerk's office.
Our current- Yes, the current registrar has, and account clerk is the position, has turned in her letter of resignation because she is moving on to bigger and better. I can't fault her for that. I do have a couple of candidates, so I need to really hurry on this because of the training schedule that's required for them, so.
What's the potential date?
It's one month, she gave her one.
So potential date of hire would be the-
Within the next week and a half. So I would say the first of December.
Okay.
Yes, my apologies.
I think I should make it clear, we wanna make sure it's in the resolution. Council, discussion before resolution. Questions for Mr. Parker, city clerk?
Who hires this lady, or individual?
We have, we'll have a free person interview, but it will be me.
The next question was about a list, this is a civil service position.
There is, but the list is broken, but I'm still gonna be interviewing from someone from the list.
And it's, you're basically filling a position, so same parameters as the existing-
One's leaving, need to bring one in. All right. No change in fees, none of that, so everything will stay the same.
Lost pay?
Straight down, by the way.
Usually you don't start riding, you're new.
We'll cover that. So there's two resolutions. Yep, the first is resolution to lift the hiring freeze in the city clerk's office for a registrar slash account clerk. Motion to consider from Gary Thomas, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Then, agenda item number eleven, permission to hire a registrar slash account clerk in the city clerk's office effective December one of two thousand and nineteen with a salary commensurate with the S I U slash City of Portland labor agreement. Sound good?
Yes, perfect, thanks very much.
Motion to consider, Bill Carpenter, second. Katie Solomon, got your name in there?
Wait, like that one you can't do this one too?
No.
Okay, yeah, I know, I just-
It was a question.
I brought that up, I don't have my motor on.
Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ray. Quick turnaround that just became official today, which is why we didn't have the opportunity to share more information earlier, like we traditionally do with council tags. Before motion to adjourn, two things. So first is, is there any further, any further business to come before the council's meeting?
Christmas decorations, guys approved, aren't gonna be up by next Friday, next Saturday, you want the Christmas?
I believe they're called holiday decorations.
Thank you.
That was home.
I don't have a definitive date, but I have talked with Nick, the streetscape managers will be up first. Then we'll, um, drag my memory or something else.
Mayor?
Yes.
And what did that negotiation come down to? On the holiday decorations?
Thousand bucks? The wreaths and the snow lights. So far, that's been the offer.
Oh, never heard of that.
Oh.
That's the offer that the city has put forward and that's where we're at.
And if we get to use them without even paying for them, that'd be better.
I have one more thing with, the last, oh, thank you, that you dropped my memory, the LED streetlights. So just a point of information, as you go through certain segments or portions of the city, you might find that the streetlights are significantly brighter. And that is with the conversion to the LEDs, this will be a couple of month process as we've discussed. There are some areas that we know were low in terms of lights because of light outages. There was a light audit that was done to ascertain best placement, make sure that we have. I have gotten some comments from people in the public, so if you're starting to hear, please feel free to inform people that the lights are going up, it will be throughout the city, it will be brighter, they will also be more cost efficient. The energy efficiency is tremendously improved. And in terms of total cost, this will be a cost reduction for the city. Without getting into the numbers of the purchase and installation, we're going to see a significant return on our investment. So it'll be better lit and more cost efficient.
Do you know what they're doing? Segments, street by streets, or what's the priority on that?
Yeah, it'd be nice to see the schedule.
I guess my question was, somebody in the morning you folks brought it up last month. I had some more calls tonight.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm running away here on two streets that are off.
They've targeted the darker lit areas where we're having, we have had some issues. If there are specific areas, forward them to my office, I'll forward them to D P W, please. Nick Dolby's overseeing. And he'll make sure that there are specific hotspots that they get addressed.
Because if I'm correct in saying, Mr., we're charged for oil poles and the usage are X amount per pole. There's a lot of them out over the years.
Yeah, the method is supposed to be, when people notice a light that's out, that they report it on the city website. And the poles have numbers on them. And it's helpful if they also give a street address and maybe even across street. And I realize that that can be a pain in the butt for people, but it's really helpful if people self-report those on their streets.
Going forward, once the lights- Going forward, once the lights, like the LEDs have a much longer life, so we will experience fewer outages. So if things go well, middle of next year, fewer outages, brighter lights, more cost efficient. The last thing, there was a, at 7:00 PM tonight, at Temple, I believe, is Rith Shalom over on Madison Street, there's a gathering and this was in favor, or excuse me, in conjunction with the Unitarian Universalist Church where there was a hate message or a symbol sprawled on the church. And I think it's important that we have discussions about items such as this and reinforcing that there is no place for hate in our community. And we've got a great community where people come together. Here you have two different organizations, people of different faiths coming together to support one another, saying that we agree that this is not something that is acceptable and it's important for us to reinforce that message consistently. There is no place for hate in the city of Portland. Having no further business, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Captain McCarthy, second, Gary Thomas, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Page down the yard, adjourn. See you in December.